I call the city council meeting, a regular city council meeting held virtually via WebEx of September 22nd, 2020 to order. I will ask everyone to please turn their camera on and share, and share the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our open forum, and I do believe that we do have one person waiting on the line, so I will pass it to our staff to connect the resident.
Mayor, and I do believe it takes a little while to, for the call to get connected into the main line, so we just want to give it a few moments.
Thank you. My apologies, Mayor. I do have someone on the line. I have tried to patch them through, and I did try to call them back as well, and it's busy. Oh, she's calling back, so give me just a moment here.
Are you hearing me? Hello?
Yes, hi, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm going to turn my sounder. I have two items. First of all, last week, I looked out upon the playground of Sheridan Elementary.
One more-
There with a big, hello?
Could you, hi, could you just take a moment to please state your name and your address before you-
Okay, yeah, alright, I'll do that. My name is Ruwaine Onessi-Rosan, 2421 West 65th Street. I have two items. First, last week, I looked out upon the playground of Sheridan Elementary. There with a big smile was a darling little blondie all dressed up in pink fluff and sequins. She and her preschool classmates were happy and playful. Parked along Russell Avenue adjacent to the children was a large pickup truck. In that truck were seated two construction workers chatting in the front seat, windows open. A third fellow leaned up against the side of the truck and spoke through the window to the other two. The men were unmasked and were not distancing. It was unlikely that they could verify whether or not they were carrying COVID-19. My children and my grandchildren are kept at a distance so as not to jeopardize my health. Neighbors stay shut-in and are tortured by constant beeping, crashing, bashing noises as workers plow through what was once the yard of the apartment dwellers on our corner. Now their yard will become a busy road and a driveway. These residents are paralytics, they cope with Down Syndrome, and they are autistic. Noise is not a treat for them, it is a torment. I have been in touch with all who are connected to this project. I continue to insist that for the benefit of my very vulnerable neighbors, who are extremely elderly, who are school kids, and who are disabled, this project must be shut down. They infect all of us, before they infect all of us. The schoolyard has become a dumping ground for building supplies, building machines, vehicles, as well as a site for workmen. This is not acceptable. The second matter I would like to address came before council on September 8th, number five on the agenda. During discussions, it was mentioned that contractors operating within the city of Richfield and upon projects approved by the city were criminally involved in wage theft and labor trafficking. My question is, which project or projects were associated with these criminals? What punishment did they receive? Have all associated with these criminals been banned from operating in Richfield? Do their associates continue to operate within and upon projects ongoing here in Richfield? I'll hang up, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And then, I think we'll just wait a few moments. Are there other folks on the line? Or should we just wait a few more minutes to see if anyone would like to come through for the open forum?
Mayor, I do not currently have anybody else on the line. I think with that call, that gave people enough time if they would like to call in, so if you would like to move forward, you're more than welcome to.
Okay. Seeing as nobody else is here for the open forum, I'll close the open forum, and we can move to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of September 8th, 2020, and the city council work session of September 10th, 2020.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Thank you. The minutes have been, the motion has been made by councilmember Troutman to approve the minutes and seconded by councilmember Wayland. Analyst Martinez-Gavinia, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple? Aye. Councilmember Troutman? Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The minutes have been approved. And before we go to the agenda approval, I just want to add, I know we usually do presentations on the front end of the council agenda, but I just wanted to do a brief and quick, important kind of invite to our whole community, including our council and our staff. And I would like to invite everybody to our retirement party that we are hosting for councilmember Edwina Garcia, which will be on October 8th, from 4 o'clock to 6 o'clock at the Richfield City Hall Courtyard. So that is a beautiful park right behind City Hall, where we have that beautiful statue of Sophia and the playground. And we ask you to please RSVP to Kelly Nguyen at K W Y N N at richfieldmn.gov, or you can call Kelly at 612-861-9711. And if you could please make your reservation by October 2nd. And we are asking people to please send a video statement of congratulations to councilmember Garcia if they want to stay home or they can't make it. And we will be doing all the COVID precautions necessary, and we will be social distancing. And so we want to make sure that if you are interested in planning on attending, that you please let us know so we can take the proper precautions and plan. But we are so excited to honor the leadership and the work of councilmember Garcia. And we are extremely sad that she will be retiring and leaving us on the council. So it will be a beautiful and difficult celebration for us all, but we want to make sure that we honor councilmember Garcia and that we have plenty of time and space to pick on her as well, and give her some roasts, make some jokes, and make her feel really uncomfortable. So we will be putting information out. I do want to thank our staff. We've had Kelly Nguyen and Blanca Martinez-Gavinia, and our city manager Katie Rodriguez, who have been helping and move all of this together, and our co-conspirator Jill Garcia, who has just been adding all the years of mistreatment that Edwina has given her, being her mother, and now this is, this is the payback. So we want to invite everyone to the celebration honoring councilmember Garcia.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Of course.
You know, I hate to leave everyone, because I've really grown to, to really love and respect and enjoy everyone. But I want to make sure that, that, that we have Jay Hentorn there, our chief of police, so that people are frisked before they come in, so that they don't bring any rotten tomatoes, or, you know, or, or any unwanted objects that they would want to throw at me.
Okay, I think we can arrange that.
But, I appreciate it.
Yeah. So I don't know if there's any comments, but I did just want to make the invite. Maybe I'll ask, can anyone on staff just share how the information will be shared on, so that folks can invite their friends and family to the event?
Sure, Mayor, I can, I can share. We are sharing it with Assistant Wintezon, if you want to answer, or you want me to keep going?
Oh, you can keep going, and I'll add if anything comes.
So we're sending the Richfield all, we're highlighting it in the city manager report, of course, and we have been working on developing a list so that we're, with our co-conspirator Jill Garcia, to make sure that we're getting everybody that councilmember Garcia wants there, and of course, we'll be asking her as well.
Great, thank you so much. Great, well, thank you, everyone. I just wanted to share that invite, and I'm looking forward to the event. I will move on to the approval. Oh, councilmember Garcia, was there something you wanted to share?
No, I just, I just wanted to say that it's out of the bag now that I am a lame duck. So, but, but, you know, I, you know, I, if I cry, somebody better have, have some tissue, tissues available. Because I'm gonna, I'm gonna hate, I'm gonna hate saying goodbye to you guys.
Absolutely. We will make sure to have the tissues available for all of us. Great, well, I will move on to, through, to the next item of our agenda, which is the approval of the agenda.
Councilmember Supple, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Troutman, second.
Thank you. The agenda has been, the motion has been made by councilmember Supple and seconded by councilmember Troutman. Analyst Martinez-Gavinia, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple? Councilmember Troutman? Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. The next item is the consent calendar, and that goes to city manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor, and I should qual, I should clarify, I'm using Richfield speak. Richfield is all our employees. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. Item A, consider the approval of the 2020, 2021 Emergency Preparedness Agreement with the city of Bloomington, using public health emergency preparedness grant funds distributed by the federal government for the Centers of Disease Control to provide services in the area of public health emergency preparedness, bioterrorism, and the development of a response system. Item B, consider a grant compliance agreement with Penn Investments LLC regarding a livable community account pre-development grant for 6501 Penn Avenue South. Item C, adoption of a resolution authorizing the refunding of the 2,120,000 GEO Street Reconstruction Bonds, Series 2012A, dated September 6, 2012, and the 2,770,000 GEO Storm Sewer Bonds, Series 2013B, dated March 21st, 2013, with the 3,255,000 GEO Refunding Bonds, Series 2020B. Item D, consider the adoption of a resolution to accept the Corona Virus Aid Relief and Economic Security, or CARES, Act grant of $7,745,098. And I submit all of these for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
I hold a consent calendar.
Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by councilmember Garcia and seconded by councilmember Supple. Are there any councilmember questions or comments on the consent calendar? Councilmember Supple?
To thank staff for finding the savings by refinancing the general obligation bonds, so that's going to save several hundred thousand dollars, and that's really cool.
Thank you. Councilmember Wayland?
Just wanted to thank staff for the, the incredible amount of work to process all of the finance stuff around the CARES fund. I know it's been big to figure out how, what all of our expenses were, since it's a reimbursement. I also just wanted to, to correct, I think you were reading quickly. I would love to have gotten 7 million. We got 2 million, 2.7 million. So, but yes, it still makes a huge difference in covering the extra expense as we've had this last year. And thank you to all of the finance department certainly, but all the department directors who are tracking all of those so that we could get this reimbursement money.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions from council? Great, alright. Analyst Martinez-Gavinia, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple? Councilmember Troutman? Uh, councilmember Troutman, I believe you went off line. Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have-
Thank you. The consent calendar has been approved. The next item, item number four, goes to councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is a public hearing in consideration of the approval of an ordinance, or approval to change the ordinance to the city of Richfield Code, Appendix D, Parenthetical Fee Schedule, and a resolution authorizing the summary publication of said ordinance. The proposed ordinance would revise fees related to the preparation of zoning verification letters and the processing of plat applications. So city staff conducts an annual review to determine whether its fees for permits and services are appropriate, and among other criteria, the intent of the review is to determine whether the costs of issuance of, for the fees and permits reflect the staff time and costs related to performing services associated with those fees. At the same time, staff tries to ensure that costs for city services are in line with our peer communities and are not excessive or onerous. The fees related to the building permits, zoning, and other land use permits are established by Appendix D of the city code. Staff is recommending the following changes to the fees and permits included in this section. And for a zoning letter, the current fee is $50, and the proposed fee is $65, revised to the, to account for approximately two hours of staff time. And then the plat, the platting fee, current preliminary plat is $500, and final is $250. The proposed combined preliminary and final plat would be $775. The revision is to reflect actual legal and staff time costs associated with review of plat documents. So the recommended action is to conduct and close a public hearing. So we would conduct a public hearing. Are there any comments to be made? And do we have anybody calling in to make any comments?
I currently have nobody on the line for a public hearing comment. I don't know if staff had anything else to add to the item at all? I don't have anything else to add.
Sorry. No, you know, I think these are pretty nominal fee changes, and I don't really have anything to add.
Sorry to interrupt. Councilmember Wayland here. Could we repeat the process to, for anyone who would like to call in for open forum, both for this, and I think we have one in the next item, too?
Of course. Residents are encouraged and able to participate live for our public hearings. You may call 612-861-0651. You'll be connected to me here in the chambers, and I will patch you through to the live meeting to comment on the public hearing.
Okay, well, we, just to confirm this one, we have no, no, nobody's trying to call in? So, this is a public hearing. Any final comments? Then I would, to close our public hearing.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Alright, the motion has been made by councilmember Troutman and seconded by councilmember Wayland. Are there any additional questions or comments on the item from councilmembers? Great. Oh, councilmembers, Troutman, did you have one?
Just a brief comment. Just want to say that I appreciate that we revisit the fees regularly just to make sure that they're in line with neighboring communities and reflective of the time. So I appreciate that process. And with that, I would move to approve a first reading of an ordinance amendment to the Richfield City Code, Appendix D, parent fee schedule and parent related to planning and zoning fees. And... Sorry, oh, there are two, there are two motions. Ms. Teigen, is it, is it alright? Is it appropriate if I make this as one motion? Or do we need to break them off into two?
Mayor and council, first, you need to do the roll call vote on closing the public hearing, and then you can do the rest with one motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Analyst Martinez-Gavinia, could you please take the roll call vote to close the public hearing?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple? Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The public hearing has been closed.
With the public hearing closed, I would move, we approve a first reading of an ordinance amendment to the Richfield City Code, Appendix D, parent fee schedule and parent related to planning and zoning fees, and adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending the Richfield City Code, Appendix D, parent fee schedule and parent related to planning and zoning fees.
Again, I apparently just want Simon to read this a lot. Is this not the second reading? So that is a typo. How should that motion be worded?
I believe it is a second reading.
Yes.
And so the recommended action does call for approving the second reading of an ordinance.
I'm glad, I'm glad to restate it. It just, it was in the, it was just like, like councilmember Wayland pointed out, it's just a typo in the memo. So I would, if we all agreed second reading, we'll just make that, make that change. So I would move that we approve a second reading of an ordinance amendment to Richfield City Code, Appendix D, fee schedule related to planning and zoning fees, and adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending Richfield City Code, Appendix D, fee schedule related to planning and zoning fees.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second that.
Thank you. It has been made by councilmember Troutman and seconded by councilmember Supple. Are there any councilmember questions or comments on this? Alright, analyst Martinez-Gavinia, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple? Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
With the five ayes.
Thank you. The motions have been approved. The next item goes to councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing, item number five, and we will consider a resolution approving a modification to the redevelopment plan and approving a tax increment financing plan for the 2020-21 Tax Increment Finance District, Henley II. The city of Richfield and the Richfield HRA have been in discussion with North Bay Companies, a developer, since 2019, related to their development at 65th Street and Lindell Avenue. That proposal, as it now stands, includes rehabilitation of the existing 22 apartment buildings at 6345 Lindell Avenue South, and the construction of 82 new multifamily units. The project would include at least 20% of the units being made available to household earnings 50% or less of the area medium income, with at least five of those units being in the newly construction portion of the development. So in accordance with the, with the contract for private development, the HRA, the HRA's consideration of the TIF plan in the city is now being asked to consider a modification to the redevelopment plan and approving a tax increment financing plan for 2020 and 20, through 21, Tax Increment Finance District. The modification and plan are contained in an attached document which includes the following. Alright, you know, I think I'm gonna, let's see, okay. The modif, first is the modification to the existing Richfield redevelopment plan, including a map update identifying the 2021 Henley II TIF district and a short text passage citing the new district. Two, a summary of the HRA and city's authority to create such a district. Three, a description of its classification as a housing district requiring 20% affordable at 50% of the AMI. Four, an identification of the original net, net tax capacity that the base taxes will be circulated, and those taxes will be distributed to the local taxing jurisdictions, including the county, the Richfield schools, and the city of Richfield, as was the case prior to the establishment of the TIF district. $9,650,610 as the maximum TIF and related interest that could theoretically be collected in the district over the maximum lifespan of 26 years. Next, the type of uses eligible for expenditure, including acquisition, affordable housing, and other qualifying improvements such as structural parking. And last, the but for analysis concluding that the resulting housing development would not reasonably be expected to occur solely through private investment. So while the TIF plan identifies the maximum amount of tax increment financing that would be generated in maximum expenditures on certain eligible uses, it does not commit the use of those funds. The commit, the commitment is contained in the approved contract for private redevelopment- The commit, the commitment is contained in the approved contract for private redevelopment which sets forth the following uses of TIF funds. Up to ninety percent of the tax increment financing collected in the amount not to exceed two million twenty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars to the developer as a TIF pay-as-you-go note to assist them in funding TIF qualifying expenses. Enough to ten percent of the TIF collected to be retained by the HRA, Richfield HRA for reimbursement of expenses, including staff costs and administering the district. Um, the city and the, uh, and the HRA have already been engaged in discussion with this developer for almost a year and have already granted several approvals related to the project. Um, the city and HRA have established similar TIF districts in the past to advance the construction of new housing inclusive of at least twenty percent affordable housing. And this was considered by um the HRA um yesterday, the twenty-first. So um the proposed redevelopment area modification and TIF plan describes a statutory authority that puts the city and the, and HRA can create um the TIF district. And before I move um any recommended action, I just wondered if uh, if Mr. Stark or the developer uh had, had some information they wanted to share.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Yeah, um, you know, TIF is one of the more misunderstood things that city government does. And so I just wanted to reiterate two points that uh Councilmember Garcia had made. One is that the, the existing taxes, the base taxes that have been paid on this property in the past will be continued, will continue to be paid um to the schools, to the county, to the city. And so all those taxes are going to continue to happen. Uh, it's only the taxes on the new, new value that goes in the TIF district. And secondly, that this is what's called a pay-as-you-go note, meaning that the developer is taking um the risk. They're, they're the ones expending this two million dollars in in TIF eligible expenses on the front end uh with the hopes that they, that they will pay enough taxes over the years that could be returned to them annually uh to, to reimburse them for those costs. Uh, as you'll notice, the uh total amount of TIF that could be collected here is quite large, uh nine million. But the actual commitment to the developer is only two million. We are hoping that uh based on our projections, and when I say our projections, it's actually the city and HRA's financial analysts, Ellers and Associates, uh and Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers is here as well. But based on their um, based on their analysis, this TIF district could be um fully paid off in as little as twelve or twelve and a half years. Uh, I'm not sure if Ms. Kurtz has anything she'd like to add. You're muted, Ms. Kurtz.
My apologies, I've done enough of these that I, I know that. Um, again, Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers, thank you, um Community Development Director Stark and, and members of the council. Um, the only maybe disclaimer that I will add with that is, as John explained, this is going to be a pay-as-you-go. We are anticipating that it can be paid within twelve to twelve and a half years. However, if um many things happen, including tax rate changes, um market values not remaining at the level where they were anticipated to be from the county assessor, um, the legislature changing the TIF law, there are things that could impact that term. Um, but a- as stated, to the best of our knowledge, with current assumptions, we do anticipate that this could be significantly shorter than the maximum twenty-six-year term. Um, I am on the line, though, and happy to answer additional questions that, that may come up.
Great. Would someone like to make a motion and second it, and then I will open it up for Councilmember discussion?
Okay, well, do we, do we want to, we still have a public hearing going on, right?
Correct.
Okay, and I, I, I understand that the developer is there too. I don't know, he might want to make a or they might, might want to make a mo- want to make a statement.
I don't think, this is Garrett Duncan with North Bay Companies. At this time, we don't have anything um more to add.
Okay, thank you. Then um, then Mayor, can I um move to close the public hearing?
You know, I think that there's, I want to check in with staff because I think there's somebody on the line for the public hearing, so I'll just pass it on to staff.
Good.
Are you hearing me? This is Ruwain Onesi Rosen again. I have a question.
Yep, we can hear you if you want to just state your address.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm very confused about I'm very confused about the, the, the language, the jargon, uh the uh viciousness around this uh the wording is, it's for me, it's confusing. I'm not in the financial world. Are we paying developers to build things in any way, shape, or form uh with this TIF money? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that question. Is that um something that staff can give a response to?
Yes, uh, thank you. I think it would be safe to say that we are using the taxes paid by a developer in their project to reimburse them for project costs that state statutes allow us to reimburse them for. I don't know if that answers the question. I, and this is very technical stuff, and I do apologize for that. Um, so if there's you know, I'm trying to make it as un-jargony as I can, but essentially that's it, that you know, the, the feeling is that uh redevelopment is a very expensive proposition. Uh, it's not like a developer is going out and buying a, a cornfield uh that has very little cost associated with it. Uh, in an urban redevelopment setting, a developer has to go out and buy existing structures um that, and um in cases demolish those structures uh and then build uh structured parking, which they would not have to build in a, in a undeveloped location like a cornfield. And so the feeling, uh, and the reason the state um passed TIF legislation in the early seventies was uh to recognize those extraordinary costs and to bring uh a situation where developers it, it would be as advantageous for them to develop in a urban setting as it would be in a rural setting. Uh, and so, again, these costs that they, that are only because it's already in a um in urban setting, or in the case of a housing TIF district, the costs associated with providing affordable housing, those kinds of costs can be repaid to the developer from the new taxes that they're paying. While the, the taxes that they were paying on the original property value continues to go to all the places it always went. Uh, I, I hope that explains a little bit more.
Thank you so much, Director Stark. That was very helpful. And I know um as the community member stated, these things are very confusing, but um I do appreciate, we do appreciate all the work that staff always does to help explain our city budget, our finances, these type of things, TIF, um that can be more complicated. So thank you for that explanation. Um, is anybody else on the call for the open forum?
I do not have any other callers, Mayor.
Okay.
So Mayor, again, I move that we close the public hearing.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Garcia to close the public hearing and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Um, any additional comments or questions from council members on this? Great. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Okay, there are four.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember Garcia, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Uh, then, then I would like to make the motion to approve a resolution approving the modification to the redevelopment plan to the Richfield redevelopment project in approving a tax increment financing plan for the twenty twenty tw- in in twenty-one tax increment financing district Henley two.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Garcia and seconded by Councilmember Supple. I'll just ask again, any additional questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't know that either of these impact my vote, but two clarifications. Um one, having just discussed the inclusionary housing policy yesterday, um to clarify, it's, it's obviously a good thing we if the TIF district is paid off earlier, but does that also mean that the affordable units would only be committed to be affordable for that twelve or twelve and a half years instead of a longer period?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Um, and then what was my, oh, could you briefly explain, I know um with, as with a lot of housing finance things, um both the council and the HRA play a role. Could you just explain, are we yesterday, the HRA committed to the financial amount, and now we are creating the district? Are we both approving the same thing, or what is the kind of, how do the different roles play out for the HRA and council on something like this?
Sure, and thank you, Councilmember Wayland. In July, the HRA approved a contract for private development that committed two million twenty-six thousand and change in increment in the event, in the case that the HRA and city council approve a TIF district. Um, so they kind of um took that step first contingent upon this action. And then the creation of the TIF district, I believe, and uh Ms. Kurtz or um city attorney teaching could correct me if I'm wrong, this is one of very, very few things that has to be approved by both the city council and the HRA. Uh, and so a TIF district couldn't be created uh in a, in a community that has an HRA without the approval of both bodies.
Oh, yep, Ms. Kurtz.
I would just um e- echo John's comments and add that the while the HRA is really the authority that is working and um moving, moving, moving the redevelopment and the housing project forward, Minnesota TIF law requires that regardless of a community, if they have an HRA or an economic development authority, the city council is still the body that needs to hold that public hearing, and that's just part of, part of Minnesota statutes.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from council members? All right, Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple. Rich Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Supple.
Madam Mayor, we're considering the twenty twenty revised and the twenty twenty-one proposed resolutions adopting the twenty twenty-one preliminary property tax levy setting truth in taxation hearing date, authorizing budget revisions, authorizing revision of the twenty twenty budget of various departments, and approving the city fees for twenty twenty-one. Before I get into the summary of, of all that, I want to say thank you to all of the staff who spent months and months of time budget and all of the community members and elected officials that gave input and um helped in the development of this budget because there was a lot of discussion and a lot of information that and research that went on. So thank you to everybody involved. On September tenth, twenty twenty, a special city council meeting was held for the purpose of presenting and discussing the twenty twenty revised and the twenty twenty-one proposed budget and the twenty twenty-one preliminary property tax levy. At this meeting, staff presented to the city council a preliminary gross tax levy of twenty-three million nine hundred thirty-four thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars, which includes a levy for general fund operations of nineteen million one thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars, a debt service levy of three million five hundred eight thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars, a tax abatement levy of fifty-four thousand forty-three dollars, an equipment and technology levy of eight hundred thirty thousand dollars, and an economic development agency levy of five hundred forty thousand six hundred five dollars. Accordingly, the twenty twenty-one preliminary gross levy represents a five point five zero percent increase from the twenty twenty gross levy. As council is aware, once the preliminary levy is approved, it may be further reduced at a later city council meeting, but it legally cannot be increased over the preliminary approved amount. In addition, the city must, must certify its approved tax, property tax levy for a payable year of twenty twenty-one to the county auditor and set a date for its truth and taxation public meeting on or before September thirtieth, twenty twenty. The truth and taxation public meeting must be held between November twenty-fifth and December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, and must occur at least, occur at six P M, six P M or later. The city's truth and taxation public meeting is scheduled for Monday, November thirtieth, twenty twenty at six P M via virtual WebEx meeting. Would staff like to add anything?
Um, Chris Regis, Finance Director, no, I really don't have anything to add. Um, I've lived and breathed this for the last six months, so um um, I'm pretty happy that we're coming to this process of, of the twenty twenty-one budget.
All right, then I'm going to move to adopt the attached resolutions establishing the twenty twenty-one preliminary property tax levy and proposed date for the truth and taxation hearing, authorizing the budget revisions, and authorizing the revision of the twenty twenty budget of various departments and approving the city fees for twenty twenty-one.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Are there any questions or comments from council members on the item? Um, oh, Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to highlight, I know we've had um we, like, we and staff have had many, many meetings about this already, but for any uh residents who are this is the first you're hearing about next year's budget, just wanted to highlight, um, I, I think this is is a huge success, and thank you again for staff who are working on it, that we, we in a time when there's some communities around us who are having to cut essential programs, who are having to have pretty stark conversations, that we are in a place where we, for a slightly higher increase than usual, but not, not out of line with where we've been, able to continue everything we've been doing and increase some, some of the key pieces being the hiring of an equity coordinator, the embedded mental health professional in our police department, the full implementation of body cameras, that these are, there's several things in this budget that the community has been asking for and working on since before I was even on council. And so, I'm excited to see them pass and that it's all for, I think, our average, not that this is, I don't know how many individuals actually are in this boat, but the average tax impact, we're guessing is likely to be around $4 more a month, as I think where it landed. And so, I think, yeah, I just think this is a huge win, continuing to, like, especially given the increase in the cost of benefits and things as well that are sort of not within our, we can't control those and certainly don't want to not offer good benefits to our employees. So, I'm, I'm really happy with this and excited about the, what it makes possible for next year and future years.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Other comments or questions from council members? I'd just like to add to that. So, I also want to echo the thanks to our staff. I know that this year has been extremely hard for all of our staff and our community for so many different reasons. But in addition to having to work on a budget and projections and make decisions that, such, decisions that have been so tough and difficult, probably that staff and leadership have never had to make these kind of decisions before, figuring out where to cut expenses in all places possible, how to shift around staff, how to look at our resources differently, and, and how, you know, what projects might have to be delayed, and looking at the cost benefit analysis in the short term in response to COVID, but also a long, in a long-term way as well, looking at our recovery and, and the way we move forward as a city. On top of also having to look at the reimbursements, up, close to $3 million of reimbursement to the city of Richfield for all of the additional work that we've done in mitigation around COVID. So, it's just been a tremendous year, and all of our staff, including our department heads and our city manager and Director Regis leading, these efforts have just done such a tremendous job. And I have tremendous, I have tremendously appreciated the communication, the additional communication that we've received on council to really help us understand the impact and the severity of the decisions that staff really had to make, and then work together, hand in hand, the City Council and our staff, to make, you know, the best budgetary decisions and, and short-term and long-term decisions for the future of our community. So, that's just been so much work. And I want to echo the thanks particularly to Director Regis, to our city manager, to, to, to everybody who has been a part, to our core team, working on the COVID response, but who has been a part of leading, thinking about our budget and the future and, and the now of our city in a way that we've never had to before. And I'd just like to echo, you know, as Councilmember Wayland said, you know, we are in a position, in a, in a fortunate position compared to some of our, our neighboring cities and cities across the country. But I do think we are able to look at things that we can modify and things that had to change and things that have to be delayed, but also make sure that we're putting that important infrastructure and systems in place to move us into the future and make sure that we're governing and leading well for our residents. So, tremendous work to everybody. Thank you so much, Director Regis, for, to you and your team for all the leadership and all of your work. Any comments? We thank you.
Very well said, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Supple?
Wanted to emphasize that because of the careful documentation of how we spent money for COVID, we were able to get that 2.7 million of CARES funding refunded, and that helped keep our budget whole. So, that careful record-keeping and that careful documentation has really helped serve the city well. And so, I want to emphasize that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Analyst Martinez-Gavinia, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple? Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have five ayes?
Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item is the City Manager's report. City Manager Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. I will keep it brief. I also wanted to thank Director Regis and all the department directors and all those other folks that helped put the budget together. But you did such a wonderful job thanking them. I will keep it really brief. I also want to thank council. We did have to make some tough decisions this year. And, you know, I really thank you for your questions and your suggestions and also your vision and values that helped guide this work. So, I appreciate that. It will help us to be flexible in the year ahead and roll with the punches. I also wanted to let you know that we are now recording all boards and commission meetings and will be posting them online. We are, you know, we're trying to continually adapt to this new reality, and we feel like that's important. And I appreciate, it was a suggestion from Councilmember Wayland, so I appreciate that. It is extra work for our Communications Manager, Neil Ruland. So, as you know, we have an insatiable appetite for his work and all of his communication skills. And so, I appreciate him making time for that. And, and thanks to my team, because they're assisting him with it. And then, finally, the census is scheduled to end at the end of this month. And so, for those who have not filled out their forms, I know we sound like a broken record, but please do, and please encourage your friends and family to do so as well. It really is very, it is vitally important to the city. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. Any comments or questions from council on the City Manager's report? All right. The next item is claims and payroll, and that goes to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. In order to, you know, I, I really appreciated all the, you know, all the accolades for the staff, because, you know, that's doing what we do and keeping track of it and, and making sure everything's transparent is not an easy job. But, you know, I think we, we, I keep saying over and over, you know, what a, what a professional staff we have, how able they are to do this. And I think, I think City Manager Rodriguez has, I, I think she's doing well and learning a lot, because this has been, this has been a big, you know, it's kind of like 20, the 2020 from hell, so with the, with the virus. So, I really appreciate everyone that, that, that will get money for claims and payroll, because I deserve it. So, I will move claims and pay payroll.
I'll second.
Claims and payroll has been moved by Councilmember Garcia and seconded by Councilmember Troutman. Analyst Martinez-Gavinia, could you please take roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman? Councilmember Garcia?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have five ayes?
Thank you. Claims and payroll has been moved. The next item is hats off to hometown hits, and we'll start with Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I just wanted, some, the really critical things that are on our plate right now is the census. And, and I appreciate that everyone in the city staff is just doing, doing such a wonderful, wonderful job of publicizing and working on it, educating people about it, and, and Blanca has really, really, you know, this is one thing that, that I noticed about, about our city is, you know, how strategically smart we are, because the existing people that already have their plate full because of all their duties, but yet, when something like this comes up, they're willing to put on a different hat and, and take that role that's needed and, and run with it. And I appreciate Blanca's good efforts. And I appreciate the, you'll see some longsides throughout the city, reminding people that they've got, they've got to do their census. And, and it's imperative that we contact folks that we know and give them the information and encourage them and, and ask if they need some help or whatever, so that they can make this happen. The census is so important to us in terms of, of the representation we get in Congress and in terms of the general voters that come our way. The other thing I wanted, wanted to mention is, oh, and, and going back again to the census, you know, here's an idea, you know, we all have our, our contact lists on our computers. It would be a good idea if we send out, you know, the, the webpage for, for people to find out more about the census and encourage all our contacts to make some contacts of their friends and their neighbors. So, we've got to do as much as we can to make sure this happens. And that second, the other thing that's, that's extremely, it's, it's not, not, I would say important, I would say critical and urgent, is the voting for the upcoming presidential election. It's imperative that we, that we, you can, you can go to City Hall and register and vote that very same day. You can also, if you have an absentee ballot, or at home, and then to expedite everything, take it to City Hall, and City Hall will have someone, that will have, from the city clerk's office, will have someone out there collecting these ballots. Or you can walk, come into the building and place it yourself in, in the box that will, that will keep the ballots safe. But, these are two things that just don't have any room for, you know, for us to not take seriously. And, and I appreciate, you know, everything that the city is doing. You know, I always marvel at how well the city does perform.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll piggyback, I, I had voting on, on mine as well. I'll add in, I won't say much, so I'm not venturing into campaigning territory, but just that the, the City Council ward races are on the ballot as well. Wanted to highlight, thank you to RDAP for hosting a candidate forum in, I think, last Thursday, and then the League of Women Voters is hosting one on October 1st. That one, I don't think will be live, but, but will be recorded and then played in a few different places. So, I'm encouraged, folks, to pay attention. Hopefully, by now, you've heard there's a presidential race, but there's local races as well. And then, the only other thing I had, just wanted to thank Director Markle and everyone from both Recreation and Public Works for the, putting together the community playground build at Washington Park that was now a week ago. It was a lot of fun. It was really great. I got to, to join in last minute. And anything there that looks crooked, I didn't help with, and anything that's sturdy, I did. But, seriously, go check out Washington Park. It's a beautiful new playground. It was a fun event and, and felt safe despite the, the COVID scenario, that it was maybe not quite what we had thought it might look like initially. But, yeah, go check it out. It's, it's beautiful and badly needed the update. So, thanks again to everyone who helped with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. There's only one unspoken hats off that I wanted to mention. I just wanted to mention our, our farmer's market, something that I was unaware of. Love going to a farmer's market as a family, and it's safe, it's socially distant, but something that I was unaware of until I looked on our city website. You can also pick up from vendors and order online. So, you can do, you can do a pickup and you don't interact with anybody. And so, for folks that want the, the honey and the fresh bread and the meats, and of course, the vegetables from the farmer's market that are so amazing, but want to keep that social distance, if you go to the farmer's market section of the city web, website, you, you're able to do that. So, I just wanted to let folks know. And, and it's still, it's still going. It's going to be running through mid-October. So, we still have just about a month left of, of the farmer's market before the, before we close for the season. And, and I guess here, here's a question, I don't know if staff knows, are we going to try and do a indoor winners farmer's market at any place this, this year? I don't know if we have any plans on that yet or not.
Councilmember, we don't have firm plans yet, but they are actively engaging on a plan to see if we can do it safely. So, we're trying.
Thank you.
Councilmember Supple?
Thank you. I have one item. I just wanted to do a shout out to all organizations that work together to do the Free Bikes for Kids at Taft Park. Over 100 bikes and new helmets were given out, and it was people from the Three Rivers Park District, the Minnesota Bike Alliance, the Safe Return to Schools group and, our program, and the Richfield Rec Department. So, thank you, and I'm sure the kids all appreciate it.
Thank you. And I just want to echo, please go out and vote, pin down the ballot. Please encourage your family, your family members and friends to fill out the census and to go vote. This is so extremely important. And then, I'll just repeat my invite to everybody to please join us on October 8th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM to celebrate Councilmember, Councilmember Garcia at the City Hall Courtyard, which is the park right behind City Hall. And we ask you to please RSVP to Kelly Nguyen at 612-861-9711 by October 2nd, or you can email her at kwynn@richfieldmn.gov to get a spot at the celebration. And we are excited, sad to, we're excited to celebrate Councilmember Garcia and sad to see her retire. So, please, please share the invite with your friends and family, and we are asking you to come together as a community as we celebrate Councilmember Garcia. All right. Well, we're done with hats off to hometown hits. So, seeing as we have no other business, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.